Ask you to pledge, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members are present? Any announcements before we begin? Nope? Okay, uh, we need a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second? Those in favor? Okay. And before you also are the Board of Ed meeting, executive session minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. There are any additions or corrections? If not, then a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Those in favor? Okay, no correspondence? We move to the first public comment session, ask you to come to one of the two microphones, state your name and address, so that we can assist you if we need to get back to you. Well, generally, they don't announce when things are working, you only hear about it when it's not working. And what was the school?
It was a California, I'm sorry, remember?
Okay, alright, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move, uh, there's no, um... You can speak on anything you would like in the public comment session. Nope? If you could just step a little closer to the mic, that's okay.
So I'm just speaking on behalf of the student actually goes to parent center. Um, he's quite innocent and naive to this subject matter, and I just kinda wanted to get a feel as well. But I also have a concern that if we don't set specific boundaries, that we may end up with a coed situation in our locker rooms and bathrooms, because what if one day or the next day, a boy or a girl says, well, I identify, today I identify with the person of the opposite sex, who just opened the Pandora's Box for maybe boys to be able to change in girls' locker rooms for the purpose of taking pictures, or to change with their girlfriend, or to expose themselves. And I'm just concerned about where we draw the line. We have a real problem in our society with texting and promiscuity being mainstream. So I just wanna make sure that our students are being protected on all fronts, especially the bullying side that may occur with transgender students changing in, in the locker room. I, I feel that it's, um, maybe at greater risk of being made fun of or mocked or bullied. So, thank you.
Okay? Okay, Dr. Hicks.
We have the Smart Schools Investment Plan, which is how we're planning on spending the close to $2 million that we received from the state for technology enhancements. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rick and to Kristen, so that they can inform the board about what's going on. Then later on in the agenda, under Board Development, there's actually some actions that the board has to take, so that we can pursue getting the, the computers for our kids.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hicks was also very insurmountable in putting the technology plan together. New York State and everyone, BOCES, has required a technology plan from school districts for at least about the last fifteen years. So we have had a plan that just gets updated every three to five years. Our current plan, as Dr. Hicks mentioned, was put together through several meetings with constituency groups, which you could see on page three of the plan. This plan will be updated, looked at, every single year. At this point in time, if we approve a plan that runs through June thirtieth of 2019, we don't need an, a board approval each year unless we make significant changes to that plan. The last plan that the board approved was in July of 2012, and that plan runs through June thirtieth of sixteen. However, the Smart Schools bond and the 1.9 million that we will be able to receive is actually gonna force us to update that plan, and that's what we did. We updated the plan to make it, um, as technology of today as it could possibly be. And what it does is it lists devices, as you can see, it lists, um, how those devices will fit into the instructional plan. We will be asking for approval of the technology plan and the Smart Schools Investment Plan. But before we get to the Smart Schools Investment Plan, I know Kristen has a couple of items to mention on the technology plan.
And again, in terms of the devices that were identified within the plan, we did solicit feedback from stakeholders within the district, including, um, teachers, parents, community members, specifically relating to technology needs within the district. Again, the District-wide Technology Committee, um, has met this year and has reviewed the plan as well. And again, the list of requests that you will see within the plan is feedback that we've received from that, from that committee.
So if there's any questions of, uh, Kristen, myself, Dr. Hicks, regarding the technology plan?
Now, so it's, it's due to run to, the initial plan was due to run till June. But now we, this is an update to it. What's, you know, there's a lot of zeros and ones here, but... But, well, give us some of the highlights, you know, the significant changes, why you thought it was necessary now to update it.
Sure, um, I think, I think I would say there, there's, there's two main parts. And I'll ask Kristen to talk about what's happening in the classroom, which is one of the main parts. The, the, the other main part is the million nine that we are receiving from New York State for, uh, technology. If we look at our own budget each year, uh, we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, but a lot of that is refreshing what we have, as we know technology keeps changing. And now with an influx of that much money over the course of three years, we needed a little more detailed analysis of what we're gonna do. Big difference from spending a couple hundred thousand through the budget, which a good chunk of that is, is dollar-for-dollar state-aided, as opposed to spending eight hundred thousand the first year and, and similar amounts for three years. So taking a look at what happens in the classroom, uh, is, was, uh, was the most important piece, and...
Sure, and, and one of the primary goals in, in looking at, again, at the plan, was getting devices in the hands of students. So, again, we're looking primarily at mobile devices, um, and again maximizing the number of devices that we can get into the classrooms. So you'll see, again, it's, it's a three-year cycle in terms of the implementation that we're looking at. And as Rick said, we're looking at approximately about eight hundred thousand dollars, um, on device purchases each year.
Now, what, you know, the note you had in there that was, that was about two hundred, you spent about two hundred thousand dollars a year on technology. With this new, all this new stuff we're gonna spend, this 1.9 million dollars, is that gonna increase then our, you know, refresher budget, or, you know, our yearly budget to keep everything fresh? And, and what is, what are we expecting to spend with that then?
So if, if you, if you take a look at, um, the, the two hundred thousand that we spend each year approximately, we should be able to maintain the refreshing and, uh, refreshing of new equipment along those lines. You know, so right now, with an influx of, of mobile technology, of the classroom floor, classroom testing, state testing and things like that, our two hundred thousand should be a good number to refresh that. Right now, we're adding each year devices, and, um, instead of adding little bits at a time, we're able to do a nice large influx.
One other thing worth mentioning for Mr. Showalter. Because we had two big needs, we had the infrastructure to make sure everything could work, and then we had the devices that the kids could use. The infrastructure really is gonna be taken care of through the building project.
Yeah, the project, right.
And that's the highly expensive stuff that we don't think we'll have to refresh. The, um, machines for the teachers and the kids are gonna be taken care of through our regular budget and through the Smart Schools Bond Act. But there might come a time when we make a recommendation to have a local amount of money stashed aside for technology. Many school districts, in addition to the categorical aid that they get from New York State, which is what Rick was referring to, the two hundred thousand, it, it comes to us as aid and it's targeted, and you can only spend it on hardware or software. Many school districts also have a line item in their regular budget to take care of technological needs when things start to ramp up. So there might come a time, after this couple, two, three-year rollout, that we're gonna ask the board for additional funds in that regard, or at least a shifting of existing funds.
Now, are we gonna keep spending that in these next three years, then? We'll still be spending that two hundred thousand dollars a year on, on other...
Yes, yes.
But then you expect after the three years, that amount would go up. Is that what we're saying? Or you, you expect it to be about the same?
I, I think it'll be closer to the same, and I, and what Dr. Hicks was saying is that certainly, um, as we go forward, it doesn't look like a district our size, two hundred thousand dollars, is gonna keep up with technology forever. But that infrastructure influx that's happening with the project should put us on, on a, on a very good, longer-term cycle.
So, aside from the infrastructure, which I, I know that that's one of the big cost items, and it's also got the longest lifespan. I mean, the, a lot of the, a lot of the gear that I'm seeing marked as new, it's the computer equipment in the classrooms. Aside from the fact that we haven't done a lot of, you know, significant investment, and the investment that we've done in the past is desktop. I mean, are we able to spread the money a little further because we're actually going more for tablet and, you know, like basically lighter-weight equipment?
Yes, absolutely.
Definitely, and our, our vision for the 1.9 Smart Schools is mobile technology for kids. We pretty much reached our initiative of mobile technology for teachers this year with laptops for teachers within the district. Mobile technology for kids is the next thing that we need to heighten. And, and you're right, Matt, that's exactly where we're gonna go with it.
I'm, I'm really happy to see all of the investment in the hardware, but where are we in, in training for teachers for how to use it? And, uh, everyone using School-Age and using it in the same level, in the same degree? How does that factor in to just getting things in the building?
Certainly, and, and that is, was one of our primary focus coming into the school year. We had three days prior ba, prior to the school year starting, where the focus was technology integration in the classroom. So we were able to provide workshops on Google in the classroom, School-Age, all, all sorts of different web-based types of technology that teachers are now utilizing in the classroom. So that's definitely been, uh, on our, our radar. In addition to that, we have had opportunities for training from BOCES. We have BOCES trainers coming in, working with teachers one-on-one. We have our own instructional technology, TOSA, who goes into teachers' classrooms and assists in that way as well.
And so who, is there someone that's gonna follow up and make sure everybody is using the School-Age, posting assignments, posting grades? And so that, you know, if you have two students in a particular class in a high school, different teachers, that they're getting the same experience?
Yes.
With, in terms of the preparation for college, uh, with, uh, assignments, you know, turn it in, all of those other, uh, technology that we have in place?
Yes, and, and the building principals have been following up with their faculties on, on the implementation of, of the program. And I think after this first year, I mean, we didn't mandate School-Age at grade six through twelve, but it, it's definitely worth the conversation at the end of the school year to see where we are in terms of the implementation and what else, what other types of training teachers will need to make sure that, that every student has that experience.
And there's training that's available for the teachers during the year?
Absolutely.
As they, you know, besides the three days before? So that, you know, if they get stuck or something doesn't work? It's not just held off until the next training?
Certainly, we have resident experts, we have teachers, um, that have been able to provide online courses to their, to their colleagues, which have been very, very well-received. So that's, again, another opportunity for professional development.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question relating to the, a couple of years ago, we were talking about, uh, computer testing mandates coming down. Those were delayed in implementation. Would this investment allow us to meet any current or future mandates for computer testing?
Absolutely, yes. And this year we'll be, we will be providing, um, computer-based testing for, for field tests for the three-three-eight math and ELA, so that will be a pilot, um, experience for us this year. But certainly, these type of tech, technologies, the devices, the number of devices will help, help us satisfy that.
New York State released a list of specifications for computer-based testing, and the devices that we're gonna purchase all meet or exceed those specifications. We're not going to purchase any mobile technology that a kid couldn't have a multi-use for.
So they can use a tablet to take their test?
Yes. They can use a tablet, they can use a laptop, they can use a desktop.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, so you need a motion to approve the technology plan?
We don't need that until later in the agenda.
Okay.
So this gets us through 2019, right? So this is an update for another three years to 2019?
Right, and certainly, if something changes significantly, then we would do the same thing that we just did, bring another update to the board.
Just one more thing, Rick. I think it, it's worth noting, and it, it needs to be said, that the technology that we've been able to purchase in the school district, above and beyond the two hundred thousand dollars in categorical aid, has come from the foundation and has come from PTO groups. If they wouldn't have helped us, we wouldn't be in the place where we are right now. We'd be having to spend the 1.9 million in other areas. So that's, it's worth noting that.
Now, the, now the one point, just to clarify, the 1.9 million, that's like one-off, basically, from the state?
Yes.
Correct.
And, you know, we don't have to, the state taxpayers have to pay it back, but not us as the school district.
Right. And we have to buy it and then get reimbursed from the state. It's one of those weird ones.
So the, the Smart Schools Investment Plan draft that we have before you, is a draft because the, the requirements are that the draft has to get posted for thirty days, um, on our website, and people get to, uh, have input on that draft. And then it also has a requirement that we have a public hearing, which we would, um, request that the board allow us to do just at the board meeting of March fourteenth. And then after that public hearing, the next board meeting, the board can adopt the final Smart Schools Investment Plan. At that point, we would start to, um, move forward. The, the memo that I have, you know, it does mention the, the million nine, and that's our allotment. A small amount of that will go to the, uh, to non-public schools in our district, as I had mentioned. The, um, idea is for us to utilize these, as we mentioned, as classroom devices. If you look at the flowchart that's on there, we are only on the second box of that flowchart. And if you see the, the, the stream that goes after that second box, the far right-hand side, classroom technology devices, is where we plan on spending our funds, with your approval. What that does is it bypasses that middle block, because we don't need that due to the capital project. And then we go right to the very bottom, after the board approves the, the final plan in April. Then we go to page two of the flowchart, which literally has six different New York State approval levels for that Smart Schools Investment Plan, but we're hearing that that goes pretty quick. And then after that, we can actually purchase. A rough time estimate, if we do, um, get approval from you at the April fourth board meeting, we're all ready to hit the transmit button on the, on the site to transmit all of this information to the state. And I'm hearing it's anywhere from four to six-week approval from there. The, um, item that I just brought up, near the end of the Smart Schools Investment Plan, I think it's Roman numeral number two, that's what that mentions, all devices will meet computer-based tested recommended specifications. We wanted to make sure that they, the state put out two levels of specifications, minimal and recommended. And we did wanna make sure that each device met the recommended, which is the higher level of specification.
So given that we've got the kind of two piles of money, we've got this, but it's gonna be potentially delayed, and we have the money that's as part of the capital project. I, I, if I'm remembering this correctly, we, we're gonna have some of those investments that will be made from the, from the, um, capital plan, like this summer, effectively, you know, some of the infrastructure pieces. Are we also gonna be purchasing, uh, some of the, you know, end-user devices over the summer using that money? And then this is kind of the other piece that'll kind of fill in the gaps later?
Yes, and, and actually, we, we should be right in that same timeframe for both pieces. If there aren't any other questions, uh, later on in, in the agenda, we'll ask for approval.
No? Okay. Alright, Rick, we'll go right into the financial reports?
So this is, what we wanted to do, and, uh, one of the requests that, that the board had had, is, uh, can we make the financial reports more meaningful and, and less voluminous? You know, um, what we did is we met with our internal and external auditors, and, and we came up with a format that we thought looked a, a lot, uh, was much more streamlined, anyway. So it, it gives you all the same information for the bank reconciliations, which is the treasurer's report, which you do have to approve. You only have to approve it quarterly. We've always brought it monthly, and, and unless there's an objection, you know, we feel we would rather bring it to you monthly. The other thing is, uh, a current revenue and expenditure report is included. You know, you're always gonna be a, a couple of months back with the treasurer's report. You know, there's no way the office can reconcile in a day or two. So, um, now you'll have both the reconciled monthly treasurer's report, revenue and expenditure for each fund. But then you also have a general fund current one. Every once in a while, on that current one, you may see a negative balance. This time, actually, I don't think there are any in the expenditure side, but that's because they're not reconciled at that point. The district treasurer will run that report at the eleventh hour, usually on a Wednesday prior to the board meeting, so that it gets in the packet with the most up-to-date information.
I like the new layout, it has everything in one place, so it's not flipping back and forth constantly, so...
And certainly, um, all of this is, you know, could always be considered a work in progress. You see anything that you think, you know, was there a way to do it better or differently? Certainly let me know.
Anyone have any questions on the financial reports or the schedule of bills, check warrants? Nope? Okay, then we need a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. Personnel?
Mrs. Claus, before you have a number of items. First, our request for leave of absence. We have appointments, including two, uh, classroom teachers, or two, uh, instructional appointments, academic intervention services. You have the spring sports, uh, recommendations for review at this meeting. And I think P three answers some of your question regarding, uh, the training that's provided to ma, uh, meet some of the needs of the new technology. And you also have additions to the substitute teacher list.
Anyone have any questions? I need a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
On the non-instructional staff, you have resignation, you have appointments, and additions to the substitute list.
Again, any questions? Okay, motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. Uh, the special needs and student activities?
Light month, seventeen committee on special ed meetings, mostly initial meetings or amendments to the IEP. So nothing strange or unusual. And ten preschool special education meetings, they're all really new referrals to the process.
That's very light month. Okay, a motion to approve, no questions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. Alright, we're going to move on to Board Development Policy. This would be the point where we will approve the updated Clarence Central School District's technology plan. Any other questions or concerns to address before we vote? Nope? Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Those in favor? Okay. Then we'll do the separate one for the, okay. The second part is the draft of the Smart Schools Investment Plan, which was the second, uh, plan that Rick went over. Any questions? Concerns? Okay, then a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. Our last policy is the revised gender identity policy. Uh, the purpose of the student identity policy and other policies for that fact is to lend clarity to the issues for all stakeholders. It sets expectations of the district, it ensures compliance with underlying laws and guidance to the best of our current knowledge and understanding, and potentially mitigates liability. We have in place in New York DASSA policy, Dignity for All Students Act. This policy was signed into law on September thirteenth, two thousand ten, and took effect on July first, two thousand twelve. This policy amended prior state educational law by creating a new article. It seeks to provide the state's public elementary and secondary school students with a safe and supportive environment, free from discrimination, intimidation, taunting, harassment, and bullying on school property, a school bus, and/or school function. It provides guidelines for instruction and civility, citizenship, and character education by expanding the concepts of tolerance, respect for others, and dignity to include an awareness and sensitivity in the relations of people, including but not limited to different races, weights, national origins, ethnic groups, religions, religious practices, mental or physical abilities, sexual orientation, gender identity, and sexes. Additionally, schools will be responsible for collecting and reporting data regarding material incidents of discrimination and harassment. So are we required to have a transgender policy? No. This policy assists our district's administration fulfilling our obligations under New York DASSA. It provides important tech, terminology, guidance for record-keeping with respect to names and pronouns, restroom and locker room use, physical education in sports, and other school-related events. We are providing additional guidance for our administrators in order to remain in compliance with New York DASSA. All school districts need to be educated and prepared to address issues that arise in the lives of our students. As can be noted by the overview of the policy, it ensures and protects the rights of all students. This policy does not give more rights to transgender students, but rather continues to assist school districts to provide a safe and supportive educational environment for all students. It is also very important to have a student gender identity policy in place, as we will have transgender students from other districts who will visit our school as students or athletes. With respect to the student gender identity policy, our administrators will review all requests relative to the issues of records, names and pronouns, restroom and locker room use, and physical education and sports participation. At this point, there is no law or court decision in New York mandating that a student should be allowed to use the locker room or restroom of their expressed gender identity. There is only guidance from state education department. The new language... The new language explains the variables that need to be considered and suggests that a reasonable alternative arrangement will be provided. This policy provides the district with the guidance and the ability to address specific needs of each student on a case-by-case basis. That is some of the background of the policy addition that we're reviewing this evening. At this point, does any other board member like to make a statement or have any questions or ask for clarification from Dr. Hicks? Anyone?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention, I've been thinking about this a lot, I think all of us have. And I think that, you know, good policy needs to stand the test of time. You know, it's, I certainly think that we're, the way that things are being handled by administration now are perfectly appropriate. But that administration can change over time, and it's, so it's something I think that, that policy needs to, to address. I think it does a, you know, I think the policy discusses how we handle transgender students. I think, I don't know if it's an additional policy or something. I mean, I think just the one sentence here says, "A transgender student who expresses a need or desire for increased privacy should be provided with a reasonable alternative arrangements." And it describes what those might be. I think that if we're going to put a policy, we should maybe say, "Any student who expresses that need for or desire for increased privacy should be provided." As we've listened to people talk, you know, people have been saying that almost all children feel uncomfortable at different points in changing the locker rooms. They, you know, due to delayed or early puberty, people, you know, the students might feel uncomfortable. And, you know, I think the introduction of transgender students to that environment would certainly increase the, you know, the degree of uncomfortableness that some of our students feel, and their parents as well, and we've heard it in our meetings. So I think that the direction, I mean, the policy itself says that we'll adhere to federal or state laws and court decisions, almost anticipating that there's going to be things coming. So to me, I think we need to move in the direction of protecting the privacy of all students, because then that's not subject to court rulings. You know, we're providing privacy for anybody who wants, and, you know, it's going to take some work. It's going to take some time to, you know, to make those arrangements. But, but I, I think if we look where things are going, I think that's the, that's a priority. It's not discriminating against anybody, but it's providing privacy for all of our students who feel uncomfortable. And so it's, it's not, you know, so I don't know, this, this policy doesn't address that specifically. It addresses the needs of the transgender students. I think if we address the needs of all students by offering them greater privacy, I think, I think that's a, you know, reasonable direction to go as well. So I don't know how people feel about if this policy covers that, or, you know, it doesn't explicitly say that. It addresses the transgender student. And again, right now, I'm not concerned, because, you know, Jeff's been doing a great job in, in our building principles. But I think we should prepare for a day when, you know, when the people change. You know, as board members we serve at the pleasure of the voters in the district. And I think the policy should be crafted to stand the test of time. This, I think, works for now, but I think we should definitely move in the direction of great privacy for everybody.
I got a question. Dr. Hicks? Does this policy, would this policy help you? I mean, to me, you know, we've, we've considered a previous policy revision. This one's been changed. It seems somewhat ambiguous on, on the key issue of the restrooms and bathrooms, but, but I think we can live with it. So my question to you is, does this help you as an administration?
Right, it, it does, because it sets the expectation for how to deal with the categories within the policy, whether it's records, whether it's pronouns, whether it's investigations of discriminatory conduct, or whether it's restrooms and locker rooms.
Okay, so it'd be, your recommendation, you would, you would like this policy as it's written?
Yes, it would be.
It would help.
And I think it's worth mentioning that the rewrite of the restroom and locker room language was given to us by our school attorney, who found it in the New York City transgender policy. So that's the genesis and the origin of it. I think Jason makes a good point, and, you know, the way I had interpreted it would be that all student, if there was any student who was uncomfortable with a particular situation and they requested an alternative arrangement, that we would do that for any student. I think it's a good point to bring that up. If, if you think that needs to be clarified within the language, I think we should. But yes, to answer your question, this would be helpful for, for administrators in how to carry out the policy of the Board of Education.
I mean, Jason's got a suggestion that we may want to put in there. If we didn't pass it tonight, we went back, made that adjustment, could you live another month or two?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if, I mean, my point is, maybe it's, maybe it's not appropriate for the student gender identity policy. Maybe it's a, you know, just an addition to one of our other policies or a new policy in a different section of the, of the policy book.
I'm going to assume that you address issues of, when students are concerned with any of the issues that are listed in here, bully, intimidation. That's already something that's done and has been covered under DASSA. So repeating it or inserting it into this policy seems rather redundant.
So are you suggesting we take this out, then?
No, what I'm saying is that we already have in place protections for students under the original DASSA. And what this policy recommendation is coming in, because transgender students are not specifically mentioned in the original DASSA article, that it provides additional protection for transgender students. It also provides some direction for school districts in areas that are not appropriate for, in the original DASSA, such as the use of pronouns. Certainly that was not anything that needed to be addressed. Whereas this provides additional information and direction for the district for records. You know, there's not just a wholesale change of pronouns in some, in a school record, and issues of going on trips. So I think it provides additional information that the original DASSA did not require.
I agree with the, you know, with the record-keeping and things like that. But I think that what we've heard from people is that they're worried that it's not, it's not specific to their students who are cisgender. That, that they're, they're concerned that if we don't address that specifically, then, you know, things could happen that, that we're not intending. And so I think it should be addressed somewhere, and maybe not in this policy.
Because that would be a procedure, not a policy. The procedures in, in place where a student is working with someone in the guidance office, brought into the district with, from their parents, and those types of conversations, because as in you have the same levels of concern from students that they can cover a wide range, I think the same thing could be held for transgender students. I don't think we can just say, this is, we're going to put everything on the table. It may not be a request. I think we're making it more complicated than it needs to be. I think that it's a case-by-case basis, that's, a decision has been made. Maybe a student that would like to use a private bathroom. I, I think we're trying to overthink all of the possibilities and trying to put it into a policy. And I don't think that we're going to be able to do that.
I don't think we're overthinking when we say that students are, and parents are going to be uncomfortable.
Absolutely, I'm talking about all the variables. If you're trying to come up with all the variables put into a policy for decision-making, I think it needs to be a case-by-case decision. And as I said, this isn't put into place so that transgender rights trump everybody else's rights. I think that, that we have administrators and people that work in the guidance offices that will respect and ensure that all students' rights are adhered to and, and taken into consideration. It's not going to be just what a transgender student would like to have in terms of the availability of, of a locker room or a restroom. I, I have, I, I believe that, that the student, the people that we have put into place to run the district are not going to make that leap. Where the only, only rights are to be considered are the transgender rights. It's something that they do on a day-to-day basis.
So why, my, well, why not put it in policy, then? If that's what's in practice?
Well, what exactly are you looking to have be put into a policy?
Well, I'm saying that, you know, this identifies specific need for transgender students. If they need, have a need or desire for increased privacy, it should be provided. In the event that, you know, laws change, transgender students by law are allowed into the locker rooms and changing areas, then we should have a policy that, we wouldn't need to think of a new policy. We would already have a policy in place that would allow privacy for the cisgender students who are uncomfortable with that. I know you're saying that the administrators will allow them to do that, but if we, if we make that a, an item of policy, they would have that protection as a policy.
I mean, if I, if I could, looking at the existing DASSA policy, I, I think that for a lot of the harassment and discriminatory components, for all students are covered in DASSA. And, and I, I think that, to Mr. Claus's point, the, the specific needs in this gender identity policy are the unique issues that are, that are related to those students. And names and pronouns are a piece of it. And quite frankly, the restroom and locker room piece is, because there is nothing that I'm aware of in existing policy, we're saying that, right now, it's, it's essentially a case-by-case issue that's being, that's evaluated by the administration. And this section that we're, that we're discussing in the transgender policy, first of all acknowledges that there are some unique circumstances related to restrooms and locker rooms for transgender students specifically. And it gives guidance to the administration on what we think that needs to be considered. Does it eliminate ambiguity on either side? But, no, I, I don't think it does. And quite frankly, I don't think there's an agreement, both in the community and on this board, as to what that should be. So my opinion is that this policy nails down what we can come to consensus on, and leaves open the door, which is already open today, for the administration to evaluate things on a case-by-case basis that comes out.
I didn't even, I didn't say that I had a problem with this policy.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying you do.
I said that, hey, there are people that are concerned that this doesn't protect the cisgender student. So, you know, let's, let's put something, and that's not going to be a discriminatory thing. It would just provide privacy for any student that, that wants more privacy. I mean, I think that's a logical way to approach it, and, and looking at the, the needs of any student, you know, now or going forward. So, I mean, I'm not saying that I have, you know, concerns about this. I think the guidance that it gives, I think, is, is reasonable guidance, and I certainly trust Jeff to administer it properly. I'm just looking at a broader need, and, and, you know, as it says, that there could be future court decisions or, or things that, that then people would feel more comfortable if, if any student were, were afforded greater privacy. That's, that's my only point. Maybe people disagree with me and think I'm crazy, but, but I think that would make me more comfortable, and...
So you're thinking that there needs to be verbiage in the policy that says to students that are not transgender, if they feel uncomfortable having, so...
I'm not saying that. I'm saying you could, you could put a separate policy, maybe it's in a different section of the policy manual, that says, you know, any student that's uncomfortable. You're not, they're not identifying whatever group they're in. You're just saying that, that any student who desires to have greater privacy, just the same sentence that we have for a transgender student. Just make that any student.
Jason, I think in the, the policy we had up until this month, there was a sentence in there, which I think is what you're alluding to, that says, "Any student requesting increased privacy or other accommodations when using bathrooms or locker rooms will be provided with a safe and adequate alternative, but they will not be required to use that alternative." That's basically what you're getting at.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm saying that, but I'm not saying, okay, we need to change this policy. If you, you know, if people want to vote on this policy, I'm not, so I'm just saying, you don't have to, to delay that. But I, I just think people would feel more comfortable if, if they feel that their stu, their son or daughter is not going to see things that they don't want to see or be seen in ways that they don't want to be seen.
So, I mean, I think that in, in this situation, we need to, I guess, I, I need more clarity on what you're, what you're looking for. So it's either, and just to be really clear on my point is, do we amend this? Or do, are we suggesting a whole separate policy or an amendment to the, the DASSA policy?
Or a different policy somewhere.
Well, but I think we, for this, for the purpose of this meeting, we need to know what's being proposed. Let's, let's discuss that, and then, and then vote on it. They need to discuss it. That way we can, we can through the, the process, either amend this, and, and then we can forward, or, or that.
Yeah, I mean, I was just suggesting, you know, maybe, you know, if everyone's gung-ho to move forward on this, that we don't hold that up, but we could put something else in place that would help, that would help the remainder of people feeling a little bit more comfortable.
Well, speaking for myself, I mean, we've had, we've been talking, you know, we had the previous version here in front of us the past two months, and we took a lot of public comment. We've, I've only been looking at this new version for, you know, less than a week. I, I'm not prepared to vote on it myself. I, I'd like some more time to chew on it, first and certainly, but that's just my opinion.
Just, I'll have some time to think.
Mm-hmm, go ahead, ahead.
I've studied this issue extensively, and I'd like to thank the community for their input, their letters, their emails, their phone calls, discussions, most of all, the feedback that we've had at three board meetings. All have been very helpful. And I'd like to thank the community that spoke up at the board meetings, because while it's a difficult issue, all the discussions have been cordial and civil, and I congratulate the public for that. I've used all of them in preaching my decision. Now, I've had a short tenure on the board, just six months, and during that time, I've said very little, because when I knew it's something, I'd like to listen more and talk less. I think I'm probably the oldest person at this table, and one of the oldest people in the room. I've learned a lot over the last few months, and things that I couldn't understand or even imagine a few years ago. I do understand now, I understand it's a very complicated issue. And sometimes complicated issues force us to go to the more controversial parts first. I've probably been guilty of that myself. But in reading the documents from BOSI's, our lawyers, recent court cases, the information from New York State and the federal government, I've come to realize that we need to be in line with those guidelines and documents, and very shortly. Because if we're not, we'll be risking litigation and losing the substantial funding that comes with that. Having carefully studied the policy, and with the new additional language, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just read that. The new part says, "The district aims to support transgender students while also ensuring the safety and comfort of all students. The use of restrooms and locker rooms by transgender students requires schools to consider numerous factors, including but not limited to the transgender student's preference, protecting student privacy, maximizing social integration, or the transgender student, of the transgender student, minimizing stigmatization of the student, ensuring equal opportunity to participate, the student's age, and protecting the safety of the students involved. A transgender student who expresses a need or desire for increased privacy should be provided with reasonable alternative arrangements. Reasonable alternative arrangements may include the use of a private area or a separate changing schedule, or use of a single-stall restroom. Any alternative arrangement should be provided in the way that protects the student's ability to keep his or her transgender status confidential. The district will adhere to federal and/or state laws and requirements, as well as the court decisions regarding the use of restrooms and locker rooms by transgender students. I trust our superintendent, our building administrators, our counselors, psychologists, to work in concert with our dedicated parents, to work carefully with all students so that they are comfortable and accommodated. And as this says, it will be stated and looked at on a case-by-case basis. Because of that, I'm not prepared to vote for you from, thank you."
Treasure?
Well, I'm not going to repeat everything Dennis said, but I, the one thing I like about the change in this one is that it does really point out that it says, "And protecting the safety of all students involved." It's not giving one person a right over another, and I really think that's where this change in this policy that was written by the attorneys really helps, and I, I'm prepared to vote.
Well, I mean, to be, to be perfectly honest, I'm struggling with the need for the additional policy relative to DASSA, and DASSA being all-encompassing. And if it wasn't for Jeff's input, feedback, and perspective on what value this brings to the district in providing guidance and how to discharge the wishes of the board, quite frankly, I probably wouldn't vote for it, because I think it's already covered. But given that, the language that is in front of us today, I'm comfortable with.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Well, I, I'll just reiterate, you know... Well, I, I'll just reiterate, you know, I'd, I'd like more time, you know, to chew on it and I, you know, I think, you know, school's not a place to, you know, conduct s- social experiments and, you know, and we're considering policies like this. I'd, personally, I like, I like a little bit of time to think about it. So, you know, if that being the case, if we're going to vote on it now, I'd probably vote against it.
I'm not even going to touch the social po-, uh, whatever you just said. I, I guess I'd like to hear from everyone if, uh, what they would like to have another month to allow Roger to chew on it or if they're prepared to vote tonight.
If we've discussed it, we've read a lot, we've been to meetings, the entire board was at a seminar last week. We've gotten a lot of feedback, as I mentioned in my remarks, and I think we have the information we need.
Matt? Jason?
Yeah, I think, you know, at this point, I'm, you know, thinking about other things. Again, we've had a few days to think about it. I think I would just probably abstain from voting at this point.
Okay, Mike?
I'm fine voting this evening.
And Tricia?
I'm fine.
You're prepared to, okay. So we would need a, a motion to approve the revised gender identity policy?
So.
And a second?
I'll second.
And those in favor? And those opposed? And those abstaining? Okay, the policy passes. Uh, we'll move on to the second public comment session. Again, reiterate that please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address so that we can follow up with any answers to questions you pose.
Probably a group point, because they've already voted on this. Um, I wish that you and Jason had to say, and I agree with him. Um, I remember as a kid, and I went to an all-girls school, I felt very uncomfortable in the locker room. I thought it'd be gym now, if we were talking about each other, but we still, they were adults. And I think that a lot of kids just do not verbalize it. You know, they feel uncomfortable, but they don't know who to say anything to, or maybe they can't even put any words. And my suggestion would be, have a couple of the areas in the locker rooms that have curtains that are private so that anybody who wants to use them could use them without any hassle. And this way you'd also be covered if you do have somebody that's transgender seeking coming in. You know, they wouldn't feel differently using that private area where someone else would. This way it's open to anybody, so they're not really segregated. So I, I guess that would be my suggestion, is we have several areas in the locker rooms that are private. And I think we have other student teams that are transgender.
We do have in some, uh, the locker rooms, uh, stalls.
Yes.
And there are those-
Less in the boys than in the girls.
Right, so there is private areas because, already in place in the locker room.
Well, there's no curtained areas.
Private segregate stalls.
Yes.
Right, in the locker rooms. And certainly in the bath, restrooms have the stall doors, so that's already in, in place. If you go over to the microphone so that they, that can be recorded.
What's your policy going to be though with sports though? I mean, are sports open to everybody and anybody? I mean, do you allow girls on the boys' teams right now or do they depend on certain teams or?
There are school districts that have girl wrestlers, there are school districts that have girl, um, football players. Yeah.
Okay, so like on your football team?
It would be a girl, right? I mean, they wouldn't play on, on the girl, on a, we don't have a girls' football team, so they'd have to play. There, there are school districts that, that do.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Dr. Hicks, I think, I think there's state policy on that, right?
Right. So as it currently stands, um, if you have a female and male iteration of the sport, then the students have to participate depending upon their birth gender. With transgender students under New York State Public High School Athletic Association, if it's been vetted and there's proof that can be obtained through parental, physician, psychological, there needs to be some type of manifestation of, uh, that, that the transgender actually occurs, then under New York State Public High School guidelines, the transgender student would participate in their gender identity sport.
Right.
Yep. We haven't had that, just so that everybody, you know, we haven't had that particular instance here in Clarence.
But it, but it does impact us potentially because of visiting athletes and that kind of-
So if there was a student that needed a special accommodation, it's up to the athletic directors to communicate with that prior to the visiting events.
Anyone else?
Hi, everybody, I'm David Ekin. Dr. Hicks, good to see you.
Dave.
I'm a Clarence graduate, I have two daughters at the middle school. I apologize I'm late coming up here. I was under the impression that we'd have an opportunity to share our minds before the voting took place.
Well, we did have a public comment prior.
I agree, and I know last time we were instructed to wait until later on in the meeting to talk about this stuff.
I mean, this evening, we had a pri-, a public comment session in the beginning part of the meeting as well. But please go ahead.
Yeah. The whole thing concerns me and I, I have two daughters, like I said, and I, I'm sure that many of you are parents up here and you have daughters yourselves. And I am not comfortable as a parent with having somebody who may have been born male and identifies as female being in the same locker room as my daughters. Whether they're changing privately or they're changing openly or, I mean, honestly, I'm not even sure how it works. But I'm not comfortable with, uh, somebody who has a penis in my daughter's locker room with them. Whether they're changing separately or whether, you know, they change separately and then come out and see my daughters. The fact is, they are genetically different, regardless of how they identify. It, it, uh, it doesn't seem right that my daughters now are put in a situation where perhaps they have to ask to be in a different location to change or to use a locker room when it's their biological locker room to get started in. So, uh, I just wanted to share those concerns with you. You know, I, I trust that the schools will make wise decisions and, and the work to protect our daughters and, uh, sons for that matter. I'm also curious to know if there is a transgender student who is permitted to use a identifying gender locker room, if that were that correct. Will parents be notified so we know, so we can have these conversations? And these are conversations we have with our daughters.
Right.
And neither of them are comfortable with it. Nobody's asked them yet.
Right. We think that it would likely be a DASSA violation of the student to have notification of parents should a decision like that be made. So, no, there wouldn't be a notification.
So, like my daughters on social media, we watch that very carefully and only let them have certain things and, you know, we try and protect them because I think that's what parents do. And yet the school can allow a penis in my daughter's locker room, but I wouldn't vote on it. Just to be clear on that.
Well, we think that it's a FERPA violation for that particular student's privacy rights to let you know what their particular schedule might be, so-
What is FERPA?
It's the Family Rights and Privacy Act. So just like other parents don't have the right to know about your child's grades, your child's disciplinary history, your child's medical condition, other parents wouldn't have the right to know about a person's transgender status. And informing you that their, this particular student was going to be given access to this particular locker room would be a FERPA violation. So it wouldn't be legal for us to do so.
But, but to clarify, I think, Mr. Ekin, the policy might be a bit, bit vague, but I think the person, administrative procedures are in place that would prevent that. Is that correct, Austin, Dr. Hicks?
Well, when you say prevented, I don't know if I understand what you're referring to, Mr. Scholz.
Well, what he was talking about, having, you know, having his daughter exposed to male genitalia.
So, we're going to take things on a case by case basis. We're going to have conversations and discussions with kids, just like we do with everything. Should there be a decision made that a transgender student is going to have access to the locker room of their gender identity, which isn't an automatic and isn't a sure thing and is not a sure thing within this policy, then we would have to make some type of accommodation to make sure that confidentiality, confidentiality and privacy of that particular student and other students are protected. So there's ways to do that, we think. But notifying parents that those kinds of things are happening, we couldn't give you notice of a student coming in to use a locker room because giving you that notice of that particular student would violate that student's right to confidentiality of their transgender status, even though other students in the locker room might know that. Do you understand what I mean, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's probably also, um, certainly something that most of us would, uh, hope, and, and it is already in place, that i- if that, if a transgender student, um, acted inappropriately or did something that in any way, uh, caused an issue or a problem within the locker room or the restroom, that student would be reprimanded in the same way that a, uh, the same sex, uh, behaviors that happen in boys' locker rooms, girls' locker rooms every single day. So the, the transgender student isn't given a free pass to act inappropriately or do things that make other students act, uh, be uncomfortable just because they're transgender and they're allowed to go in their identified gender locker room or restroom. So it's not, it's not a free for all. It, it's still within the confines of acceptable code of conduct and behavior that's acceptable for a restroom. Well, that would be my expectation for a restroom or a locker room, that it still respects other, the student would respect other individuals' personal space, their, uh, their privacy, all of those other issues, and if that student was found to be in violation of it, there would be some repercussions as far as, you know, removing all of those privileges that were extended to that student.
Can I guess one more question?
Go ahead.
Uh, the wording says that if a, a non-gendered conformant student is uncomfortable and he or she can request a different location. What if, what if that student is not uncomfortable? I, I don't say, like, this is new to me, so I mean, I don't know how that works. What if, what if the student is genetically male, identifies as a female and has no problem changing in a female locker room and is not uncomfortable at all? Is that, how does that work?
You mean, let me see if I can paraphrase. You mean that the transgender student would have unfettered access to the locker room without any curtains, privacy panels or anything like that?
I guess, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see that as a result of this particular policy happening after we've spoken to and worked through everything with the particular students. So, I mean, I don't see that as a, as an alternative. Unless there's a law or a court case that says you have to give complete unfettered access, then we have to follow the law and we will. But right now, there's no law that says that in New York State. There's no, um, court case that says that in New York State. There's guidance from the New York State Education Department and we will follow that. But, you know, I, I don't want everyone to get the impression that there's going to be transgender students in every single locker room for every single PE class. I mean, we have ninety kids in a locker room on any given period. There's nine periods of PE per day. I, I think there's a handful of transgender students within the dist-, within the, within the building. And how many of them would even want to be in a particular situation where they would be in a locker room or have that request or go through the entire vetting process? I mean, there's an entire process that we would use. We have to vet the student to make sure that they truly have a transgender identity. We have to, um, speak with them about what their preferences are. We have to take into account what the rights of all the other kids are. We have to sit down and make tough decisions, but we do that all the time on all kinds of things. So that's what we would do with this thing. And we wouldn't put kids in a particular situation transgender or, um, birth gender where we're going to make people completely uncomfortable. And it is true that if kids want, it wouldn't matter whether it was a transgender student, cisgender student, if they expressed an issue with privacy and they wanted a changing location that had an alternative arrangement, we'd work that out for the student. But first, we'd vet it and talk and figure it out and talk about all the whys and wherefores and why nots and help that student come to a particular decision, and we'd involve their parents as well.
A transgender student who has a, behind a curtain or in a stall, though, I mean, would be able to come out and see my daughters?
Well, again, we'd have to try to make an arrangement where the student's ability to see other students or the student's ability to be seen by other students is, is mitigated, um, to the best of our ability to do so. I mean, we think that's a common sense approach. We think transgender kids will believe that's a common sense approach and we think cisgender kids will be, will believe that's a common sense approach. I mean, we're, we're going to work it out in a way that we think is best for all the kids. And there will be points in time when we say, no, you can't use that particular locker room because we've looked at all the variables and there's some variable that doesn't fit. And that happens with other decisions that we make in school, whether it be a course or whatever. Okay?
Thank you, appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Hey, man. Okay, Flannan, Dr. Rose. Uh, a few things. Again, I don't envy any of your position about the justice. Quite frankly, I think it's a travesty and a shame that our morality has to be legislated. What used to make sense doesn't make sense anymore. I guess I would say in terms of notification, right now, if somebody has strep in my kid's, uh, class, a note comes home and it says that they're strep. Now, that violates somebody's privacy, I'm sure. But may I suggest to you that maybe if a notification or a request is made for a transgender student to go into a locker room or one of my children might be, maybe the note ought to go home. And let me explain to my kid and my kids how I think they ought to handle this and what perspective they should have. I'll say it again, I know what's best for my kids. I'm raising them and I don't need interference from the state to help me raise them. I don't, and I don't want it. So let me make that decision. There's probably other parents in some respect, but I'm acting as a mouthpiece for them, who are here or who can come up. Let the parents decide what they should say to their kids, how they should program or deprogram their kids, how they should handle this, because this is a big deal. There's a lot of kids coming up, I'm, I'll be fifty in a few years. This is new to me. And I can only imagine what my, you know, my dad, my mom are thinking because, quite frankly, this didn't exist a long time ago. It wasn't there, contrary to what a lot of people want to believe or what a lot of people want to say. It wasn't there. This is new. This particular thing is, it's a minority of the population. But pretty soon, what I and a lot of other people think is going to become the minority position and we need to fight too for what we think is right and what we think is more and what we think is, is just. This is just one example. As far as the policy is concerned, you've all said a lot of really good things. But if you're going to make a policy and you commit to a policy, everything that you said, um, Ms. Kloss, it sounded great and I believe you, but when you're no longer the president, that will be lost. So perhaps the policy should reflect exactly what you said and what Dr. Hicks said about contact involving the parents, if you said. Oh, yes, of course the parents would be involved or contacted. Yes, of course we would try to look for this. Yes, of course, we would look for alternatives or try to make that arrangement. What is in writing, if you're going to have a policy, it'll be gone, it'll be forgotten? I loved what you said, but there was nobody taking notes and it's not going to make a way in the policy and it'll be forgotten, despite the best of intention.
Are there, there are procedures in place that are memorialized with respect to the process?
There's a set of administrative regulations that go along with every policy, so, yes.
With every policy?
Yeah.
To the earlier point, I guess I would say I agree with elements of what everybody kind of has said there. I question why it has to be a separate policy. I'll be somewhat facetious and I'll say, what is your policy for alcoholic students? I don't think you have one because it's covered under something else or drug addicted students or, you name it. Just don't, I don't know why it's got to be called out. It's a minority position, as maybe a lot of them are, I don't know. And don't make it harder than it needs to be. I agree with that. More paperwork, more policies, more enforcement, more, it's a program. More management? It's getting crazy. Getting crazy. Thanks for your-
Thank you. No, just the street.
China and Road. I would try to be as gracious with those two gentlemen and very good. Everything that they just conveyed in terms of form that I understand, they're all for me.
me. Do you hear me now? Do you hear me now? No.
They're working on the microphone.
I'm going to be making out. All right. Do you hear me now?
Take mine.
He's going to take another.
My work's good.
Yeah, you can take mine. Now? Now? Okay. Now, my hand's going to shake, and I'm going to show my, you know. So, I appreciate what those two gentlemen just said, because they're very gracious, and if I could convey the graciousness, they did it beautifully. And I want to just say, I, I was praying for each one of you this morning, because I know this is a very difficult position, and there's no winners, no matter what position you take, because there's going to be someone that's not happy. It is a complicated, it is a complicated issue, and it's a very simple issue. It just, it just is the way you're going to look at it. So, all that being said, let me just say that I, can I just take it from a little bit of a, more of a legal pragmatic perspective, because I have an insurance background, and I have a master's in policy and policy analysis. And good policy, as you know, because you write it and you implement it, needs to be specific to address the details, because you're left mopping up the messes. So, I can appreciate the detail that you're trying to hash out, so it's clear from a legal perspective. But on the same hand, good policy over hundreds of years has enough wiggle room in it that it leaves some interpretation, although political ambition can always drive it in one direction or another. So, like I said, you're in a no-win position. Now, I'm getting nervous. And the policy's just been passed, so this might all be a moot point, but I'll throw it out there for you to mulch on as you move forward, because I suspect it's transgender this year, and we will only be mortified by what comes down the road in five years. So, maybe as you think about new policy, because there will be lots of new policy coming, think in terms of legality, such as like HIPAA law, such as privacy, such as long-term lawsuits of minors. For example, with the transgender student, there's a very high suicide rate. So, what if one of these kiddos who's struggling terribly, and you've done your very best to help them, can't make it, and they end up killing themselves, and somehow they attach it back to the board? You have to think about those things. I think it would be wise. I was just reading a student newspaper yesterday of a private institution who's really struggling with the same issue, and they're trying to be just, because they're Christian, and they're trying to show justice and mercy of God, but they're also trying to uphold a moral value that they've had, struck, you know, had for centuries. And in the process, no, they're not winning. They're getting all the conservatives ticked, and they got all the liberals ticked, and nobody's happy. And what hap, and I didn't even see this coming, but a homosexual young man was needing to confide with a friend, and he found another homosexual man on campus. They confided together, just talking, just for support, and it came out. Administration had to do what was in their policy, what was in their procedure. They went through their protocol, and it played out. And it was the two friends, who happened to be homosexual, turned on each other, and now it's turning on the administration. And I thought, oh, see, good policy helps you think through, or you need to maybe, you can't, like, you can't figure every situation out, but I guess when you're looking at these procedures and these policies, maybe build in some protective devices in terms of protection for the school, protection for the administration, because you all seem to be very decent people, and I'm sure I don't agree with you, but I would hate to see any of you who's really doing your very best, and I'm sure it's because of the high pay you get, to, to take care of kids. And we may all do it differently, but it's only going to get dicier. It's only going to get harder. And this is my town too, and I would hate to see our town get dragged through the mud when you're just good-hearted people trying your very best. And, Mr. Hicks, I really appreciate your leadership, and I hear through the grapevine you're a very fine man, and you're doing your very best. So, I appreciate that. And Mrs. Claus, I appreciate your efforts also. So, thank you for listening. I've done a ton of research on this. If there's anything I can do to help, I may not agree, but sometimes another perspective will just bring another angle to help ease your way. And we're here, we have fought and battled in, when my husband ran, but we're really for the school, and we're really for you guys, and if we can help, that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay.
Mrs. Claus, can I just wrap up?
Go right ahead.
I think one of the things that's important for us is to understand the universal purpose of school and how we help kids understand tolerance and nondiscrimination, and that's part of our charge. I can tell you that tomorrow, because we have a policy, isn't going to be much different than yesterday when we didn't have a policy. We're going to treat kids with respect and dignity, we're going to listen to what their issues are, we're going to help them work through things. That's, that's what we do in Clarence, and I just want to reiterate what the board has said about public discussion. It's important to have public discussion on controversial issues. That's what we strive to do here, and that's why we have two open comment sessions, and that's why we tabled the policy for two or three months in order to get the public comment. We want it, good, bad, or indifferent, and it helps us come to a decision. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, before you, our schedule of meetings, and our next meeting is, actually, is our first budget study session, January twenty-fifth, at the high school at seven o'clock. And our first regular meeting will be February twenty, February eighth, at Ledgeview Elementary at seven o'clock. Executive session, we need to move to executive session for the purpose of discussion of a legal issue involving a confidential student matter. And at this point, though, I need a motion to adjourn regular board meeting. Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.